Second, just leaving for year 2023. And we'll start, are there any declarations of any conflict of interest?
No. I'm a board member for the Seaside Food Bank, but I don't think that's a conflict.
And I am an active volunteer and donor to the North Coast Man Conservancy. Hopefully that doesn't prevent us from making any decisions.
You're not threatening any income from them?
Correct. And you serve under a board position for identity. Um, we're going to now open the public hearing for the state revenue share presentation to consider possible funding options. So people who represent organizations are retaking their pitch now. So I have a list of a couple of people that signed in. I'll start with those and go on to anybody else that would like to speak. First person listed, I believe is Mark.
That last name started with B, has haunted me for years. Always get called on first. I guess I'm Mark Brown and thank you, Mayor Smith and councilpeople for allowing me to address you. I don't think the last couple of years we've had a meeting or been able to do that. It might have been a Zoom meeting or not. So first time here and I hope that I can impress upon you the worthiness of our group. I represent the Seaside Hall, which is a 75-year-old house on Third Avenue in Seaside. It's owned by the Methodist Church right next door. They sublet it to the Seaside Hall and we then managed the building and rent out time slots for 12-step programs. And currently have 25 12-step programs that meet at the Seaside Hall. And people wonder about the attendance and it can go all over the place. And you know, we don't track things, but 25 meetings, five, 10, 15. Some more meetings can have 20 people there. We, I believe, we service a, provide a service to a pretty large organization. And if you look at 25 meetings in Seaside, if you look at Cannon Beach, I believe they have one, maybe two. Warrenton has a couple. I'm unaware of a 12-step meetings that actually take place in Gearhart. So you see a lot of people in Gearhart. But this is a 75-year-old building and almost every year, I don't know if any of you have 75-year-old houses. It's not unusual that you have maintenance and upkeep. And last year, I believe you helped us with our kitchen remodel. This year, we've had some, we have two bathrooms in the house. One of them had some minor repairs. We were able to take care of that with operating expenses. But we have another one that's going to require some more significant repair. And I'm hoping that the grant from Gearhart will help us do that. I believe in the material I gave you, we looked at two, two options. At times I'd like to have more than one option. And after much deliberation, we decided to go with the less expensive option, not requiring quite so much tearing out and fixing up the place. And it should do just fine. So we try to be good stewards of the funds that we receive. And we try to keep things at a minimum. But anyway, I think you, you probably are aware addiction, alcoholism are front and center in a lot of the news these days. And we believe that we're providing a important service to those people that are seeking help and want the support of 12-step program that we offer in the 25 meetings a week to participate. And again, I appreciate your, your help in keeping the house going. In addition to the, the meetings themselves, this organization has a Christmas party, a potluck Thanksgiving, a Fourth of July picnic, and a number of other social activities that provide a clean and sober environment for people to socialize. Do you have any questions? I'll address those now or please, if you want.
You answered my question.
Thank you very much, Sean. Right, welcome.
Thank you. That's, yeah, but Darren. Great. Guys, want to?
Are you the one that signed in?
Are you like you first?
Yeah.
We'll start out with the most exciting one. Well, thank you for having us here tonight. I'm glad that we could all be here in person. And we kind of got past a lot of the Zoom. Did get to be here with you guys last year in person. So I actually have two to talk about tonight. We'll start with the Sunset Park and Recreation Foundation. I know in the past years, I've actually been here and talking to you about our scholarship program, which is, which is a really amazing program. But this year, we have shifted gears a little bit. Our foundation created a committee last year. And that committee's purpose really was to look at a couple of components to add to the pool area. Those two components were a timing scoreboard system and a set of diving blocks. So with the help of Mary Blake and Logan Dennis, who's doing his Pacifica project this year, they were able to do a swimathon last year and an all-comer swimming and able to raise a really healthy amount of money through that process, enough to, to purchase the timing system, which we did last year and purchased that in July. And we were able to install that during our annual shutdown in October. The amazing news about that is they were able to carry forward about $18,000 of that money that they raised to go toward the project issue, which is the diving blocks. Diving blocks, actually, I tell you, I don't know that much about diving blocks. The chances are, if you find me in the pool, you should probably call somebody because I probably found you accidentally. So that's why I brought the two pros with me tonight. They could actually really tell you a lot more about diving blocks than I can.
Great.
Well, it's a great privilege to be here tonight. My name is Mary Blake and I've been in the area for 40 years. But for the first 30 years, I had the privilege of being the general manager of Sunset Empire Park Recreation District, which basically built an open sunset pool in 1977. So when I got there in 84, we kind of walked down onto the deck. I thought, oh, it was wet and warm and the HVAC system wasn't working. The orientation system wasn't working. The tank wasn't there. And then I looked down at the deep end, there were some wooden diving blocks. And I thought, oh goodness, wow. So we had a lot of hard work to do. So in 1987, we, we took care of all those issues around the pool, but then we tackled the diving blocks. They were really expensive. And again, I went to a local fellow, Joe Sapko, to actually make the diving blocks for us. So they have served us for 35 years. And when I say served us, the swimming pool, if you haven't been there since I, know some of our, my favorite people here, but there are a lot of new people that I haven't either met or I don't know the color of your swimsuit yet. So Sunset Pool does all the instruction, health, fitness and wellness, recreation, competition and special events for our whole area. And that includes specifically Seaside, Cannon Beach, Gearhart especially. And so these diving blocks, when somebody says, oh, they're pretty expensive and kind of only focused for the, the swim team, it's that the swimming pool is a sacred place. It's open to everybody and it serves everybody from grade to the grade. The diving blocks basically not only help in our competitive program, but it also is used by our seniors, it's used by instructional programs. So it's an integral part of our entire program. So when I got the call from a little boy that started in our program at age three, and then he went into age group 70, and then he said he wanted a new legacy. He says, yeah, those diving blocks, my parents used them. And he said, and the one that I, I won't go on and tell you your story. But so I have been the mentor of Logan, who really has put a lot of energy and effort, and I'd like for him to tell his story as well.
Thank you, Kay. As she said, I've been swimming since I was very little. I've used those blocks ever since I started swimming in that pool. And I really want to stress the importance of how those new blocks that we would use from this grant would help improve the lives of new swimmers, our apartment and just all around. Just, it would make a very large improvement on our community. And I think that this, I'm just in my words, I'm sorry. I just want to say how it is, these blocks that we have now aren't necessarily horrible, but they're around what, 30 years old?
They're 35 years old.
35 years old. And they are kind of on their last leg. They are wobbly, they're not super stable. They're, I mean, there's specifically this one block that I use all the time when I was during, doing competitions during my swim seasons. And it's slightly tilted to the left. And I know that doesn't seem like a very big thing to you guys, but for someone that has to dive off those blocks for so much of their life, and it's, it's just a really big deal. And I think getting those new blocks with much better equipment, different benefits like a kick plate to put your foot on at the back and as well as a grip on each side of those blocks to help with your start can add like just that small amount of time. But that one or two seconds that that time is added, that taken away can make a very big difference in someone's, in someone's entire swimming career. And not only can that help in time, new blocks can help a lot with bringing in new kids to join the swimming programs, new people into the pool just to check it out. And I think that it would be a big portion of, of, yeah. I'm sorry.
Happens to be in every city.
You know, when he was talking about it, is that it is really upgraded. We have a new coach that has come from Alajaswego, and she has trained swimmers that have gone to the Olympics. So she has brought another level of service to Sunset Pool. And with her help and guidance, as well as young swimmers, as well as the rest of the staff, we wanted to tackle this and we were able to tackle it in a really comprehensive way over the last two years. A lot of people might not know is that we're a special district. Gearhart and Cannon Beach are not in the district, which creates our general, general fund. So this is a project that we're doing outside of that through our foundation. And so far, we have raised all the money for both the diving time system as well as the, the digital clock on the deck. So, and literally, if you watch the Olympics, when Phelps hit, you know, one of his goals and he made it by one, one hundredth of a second, that is what he's talking about. And this young man dropped his personal time on a hundred fly at below a one minute. And, and he attributes a lot of that as not just his training, but also the equipment. We are not on an eating playing field with the other athletes when they go on. Also, he has, as well as all of our other swimmers, do not only just swim in our swimming programs, but they also go out into our, in lifeguarding our beaches and help keep our community safe. So we're hoping that you would see this as a good project and would be able to support it through your budget process. And we are open to any questions you might have. Yes?
How many diving, diving blocks are we talking about?
We have six lanes and the diving blocks are coming in about $5,000 a, a diving block.
Wow.
And then we will install them. So that includes not only the state-of-the-art diving blocks, but installation. And we hope to have that installed during our shutdown period, which is usually in the fall.
Who's the contractor that you're getting them from?
Um, we have gone out, I think it's Smith, which is our, one of our business partners that has the material. Do you?
I didn't have that.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't put it in my package. But Levi, who is our maintenance operator, is going to be installing them. And they're going to be purchased through William Smith is, is when, is, yeah, William Smith. Yeah, and associates.
Sounds right. Those are the people that make the blocks?
Yes, they're, they make the blocks, yes. Yes, they make the blocks, yes.
Are they stainless?
Yes. Yeah, and a single pedestal. And we have to go down into the deck quite a distance. So it's going to be quite a major install.
Are you approaching any other cities or municipalities?
Yes, we are approaching all three of our cities, Cannon Beach, Seaside, and your community. We're also playing with Rover. We had an incredible special event just recently, the Ninja Swingers Swimming Challenge, and we sent them through all the different challenges. And the kids had a great time. And so our goal was to raise a thousand dollars there. We made fifteen hundred dollars. And so we have two thousand dollars of just initial donations, and then we have an ending fund balance from last year's events. And also, the Seaside High School Booster Club came in really big time. One of our local businesses turned in all the profits to over a pizza night. And so we had, we had an eighteen thousand dollar ending fund balance from last year. So it's, we're really trying to reach out and approach as many people to help in the purchase of this major capital investment, which is running through our foundation.
Questions, sir? Well, thank you guys very much on that. If Darren has another.
I will change hats now.
I hear you're wasting a lot of my time. Trying to keep this one kind of brief. Yeah, I am the current board president for the South County Community Food Bank. I know I've been here for a number of years talking to you about the wonderful things that our food bank has been doing for folks in our community that need that little bit of additional food at the end of the month. Really, our primary mission is to provide a three- to five-day supply of emergency food. The great news I have for you is that we've actually been able to supply much closer to seven to ten days of emergency food for folks. So we are very, very proud of that. I think I did include in your packets, a year-end report, this is a kind of copy of a report that I send monthly to the Oregon Food Bank through CCA. And, but this period covers all of twenty-twenty-two. We actually helped one thousand six hundred fifty-four households last year. We served fifty-two hundred people in those households. We were also able to help two hundred thirteen homeless folks. We have about an average of twenty-eight volunteers, who put in about five thousand two hundred, two hundred eighty-five volunteer hours. All totaled, you can see the donations, we're able to get about thirty-seven thousand pounds of food from Costco, twelve thousand from Seaside Safeway. And so that's a, kind of totaled out to be about altogether a hundred and eighty-ish thousand pounds of food. So that's, that's very exciting. Basically, we were able to, to feed, feed everybody that came through our door on a kind of a smaller budget. My staff person, Jenny Knight, has crafted a really great relationship with the grocery outlet when they came into town. She's reached out to folks like Hamilton's Market. We actually get a lot of food from Hamilton's Market. It's really, really great stuff. So yeah, it's just very, very exciting to be able to report that to you guys. And kind of give you a little bit of update about what the food pantry is doing. Hope that you guys will help support us this year to can definitely ask or answer any questions you might have. I think when I looked at the report for, for March, we had, for the first time in about three years, we had about six hundred folks come through our pantry. It's one of the highest numbers we've seen since COVID started. So that kind of is a little bit telling to me. Rita reported today that they were pretty busy at the pantry this afternoon. So we are, we're really starting to see the need increase again as a lot of those other benefits folks were receiving during COVID are starting to, starting to go away. So, so the needs is just going to fully keep increasing, so.
Yes, do you, do you think this grant is more for just your temporary items like food? Or do you think, are you guys trying to build a little again, structure them with freezers?
Yes, I'm so glad you brought that up. Actually, so just back a little bit, last year, in our food pantry, we found we had some really poachy floors in places. Obviously, those buildings were lifted to us, so we used to, we can beach, little school pause. So we went in, we had to repair the floor in a number of places, and so we had a new flooring installed. That was kind of a project we had to do last year to the tune of about thirty-two thousand dollars. I didn't realize flooring is so expensive. This year, yes, we are looking at, at installing or purchasing and installing about six new freezer units. They four freezers and two refrigerators, actual commercial reach-in style stainless steel. Right now, we have about eight units in the back that were donated to us over periods of time. The one chest freezer we had, I think finally died. It's kind of sitting waiting to be donated off somewhere. So yeah, they definitely need to be replaced over this year. So that's one of our projects. Rover has granted some money to us. We do have a couple pieces out for that as well, so.
And my last question is, are you also working with the folks on the elk project? The formal name of the project?
Yeah. Collaborative?
Yeah, elk collaborative, you know, the potential for having elk available. They're calling to donate to food banks.
I haven't been connected up with anybody yet, but there was a short time when the, when the regional food bank was actually processing game up there for a short period. And I had a tell you, getting elk for eighteen cents a pound was through the regional food bank. It's absolutely amazing. And I honestly don't know if too many of our clients would like it, but actually, it went very, very fast. People who love elk, so. Figure out who I can reach out to.
Yeah, seeing a local connection there.
Yes, absolutely. Okay.
I think that's, I think that the animals that are kept on the highway, you know, they process those too.
So, and regional needs too, but Dustin told me that they, they kind of backed off on that for whatever reason. They had a commercial kitchen installed at the regional food bank for that purpose. But for some reason, there was an issue, they had to back off of that.
I'd like to know what the issue was.
I would love to, because I miss eighteen cents a pound.
For sure. And most, most people don't even know they're eating elk.
Right.
I think it's the.
I think I just had this conversation with Dustin like a week ago. I think it was partly, it was just incredibly labor-intensive. And then, and then there was some helping ODA upgraded a bunch of health regulations about a year ago. I don't know when Dustin stopped, but I know, I'm sorry, I'm the food web person here. Kind of weird voice for the audience. Yeah, so I think that it was also, there was some ODA regulations that shifted that are making it more difficult to process and be able to just hand out. Like people can process it in their own kitchens and donate it, but there's additional regulations, so that's going through some sort of official thing. So anyway, Dustin.
Yeah, we actually can't take it and process it.
ODA and labor shortage.
I have a comment, and I just wanted to let everyone know during the pandemic, extra food stamp money was given out. And since the pandemic is sort of over, the government has cut the amount of money that's given to food stamps, and that's why we're so busy lately. Yeah, that's, it's just busier and busier. It's just, yeah. And we do have those here now.
I also noticed on your monthly staff trends, well, an overall increase in helping people, but in the unhoused, that's not, that went up at a really weird time. Normally, we have our migration in the summertime, and it happened.
And I can tell you exactly what that is. We decided at a board meeting in September-ish, maybe it was late August, that we were going to change the way to attract. And one of my board members that spends a lot of time at the front desk said, you know, Darren, not everybody that's homeless is living in a tent somewhere. We're not really capturing the, the houseless folks that are like house-surging or, you know, living every weekend at somebody else's house. So we're really not capturing those numbers. So I don't think we're getting a really true or accurate picture of the houseless population that we're serving. And so we made a change at that, at that time to start capturing those numbers. That's what you see numbers that are out here.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. And then you're very much, Darren. We have other people who would like to come forward?
I could segue to some space.
All right.
Yeah, I'm going to stay on the topic of, hey, hi, everybody. I'm Yana Ludwig, I'm the director of North Coast Food Web. So I'm a new face to you all, you're new faces to me, but you've been supporting us for a while. And last year's support actually was part of a very nice sort of welcome to the staff gift from me. We were in the midst of a capital campaign last year at this time, and so Gerhart contributed four thousand dollars to that. And a month ago today, we actually completed that capital campaign with a lot of community support. And so I first of all, want to start out by saying thank you for that support. And what the capital campaign let us do first and foremost was move into new facilities. There was about a hundred fifty thousand dollars of the total capital campaign went into moving us into facilities where we have been able to upgrade our kitchen incubation. We incubate businesses, businesses, and we have an online farmers market. And both of those programs were able to be pretty significantly upgraded with that move. So, and one of the other things that we did with capital campaign is that we actually have a new communications plan, which has opened the door for giving us sort of a framework to work with to be doing more outreach into the community to let folks know about our programs. And so, you know, we're a partner with the local food banks, and that we are also working on the food access end of things. And the actual stat is that forty percent of folks in our county who were on food stamps lost those benefits in February. And so we have all seen like some panic and a spike in demand. And most of our programs were for staff-eligible people, unfortunately. So one of the things that we've done, one of the pivots that we've done is that we actually just got funding to be able to do a free food box program and a partnership with the Oregon Food Bank. And so the, so we're trying to sort of lean into that niche. There's more need in our community than any one of our organizations can handle under our own. So we're grateful to have partnerships with other, you know, the food banks and food pantries in the area to be doing that same work. What's unique about the Food Web, the side of the equation that nobody else is really working on, is helping strengthen our local food system in general. So what happened in twenty-twenty, I call it the gray toilet paper debacle of twenty-twenty, when we all went to store and there wasn't food on the shelves. And that's because we sent a lot of our food away, and we import a lot of our food. Well, when those imports got interrupted, we sent them on empty grocery shelves. And so the Food Web is here to really be building a resilient local food system. And so people need to know about our programs, though, in order to help us, you know, get more flow going through the market, get more of those producers getting supported. And so, so that's the end of the food equation that we're working on locally that's pretty unique. What we're looking for this year in terms of support, and you had said we could bring written testimony. I don't know if this qualifies as written testimony or not, but I can share a little information about the specific program that we're working on this year, which is our food access initiative. And we've asked for support from multiple different bodies with this. And the free food boxes, I've already mentioned that, that program is now fully funded through the Oregon Food Bank. And our federal assistance usage is still fully funded. What we're looking for right now is actually support for the two parts of this that are only partially funded, which is the Spanish language program and the low-income resident outreach. And so specifically, we're trying to actually get out into the community and doing more direct outreach. Like, you probably know about us because we come to you every year and give you a brief update on what we're up to. But a lot of people in the community have no idea that we exist. And so, and a lot of people in our community don't speak English well enough to use our systems. And so one of the things that we've been doing is that the, our full staff has committed to upping our Spanish language skills. And we actually have a specific person on staff now who was hired, Emma Cart, because she can actually interface with the Spanish-speaking community. So, yeah, so we're looking for support this year for those two programs. And yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions that folks have. Thanks, Jessica.
I have a question.
Yeah.
And it's probably that I don't understand, and you can help me.
Okay.
But under your budget, on your expenses, all the expenses include managers, money for managers. How many, how many staff do you have? And what percentage of your budget goes to your workers?
So, so we have seven people on staff right now. One of them is very part-time. She only works on market days. So we basically have six pretty robust staff positions. And so in our budget, so it's about five hundred and, I think it's eighty-seven thousand dollars this year. A hundred and thirty of that is going directly to the producers in the area. And most of the rest of the budget, like ninety percent of the rest of the budget, is going to pay staff time.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Where's most of your budget come from?
Well, it's a mix. We, one of the other things that happened as part of the capital campaign was that we did get a fairly significant USDA grant, which is represented there in the budget, the last line of the income is. So we have a three-year grant through the USDA supporting our programming. And then it's a mix of grants and direct donations. City support has been, you know, a chunk for, you know, for us for the last few years. And we've, we've asked for, we, we just decided to ask everybody if it's anything this year. So we've asked Astoria, Gerhart, Cannon Beach, and Seaside, as well as the county, each for five thousand dollars. So that's, that's a, you know, part of where our funding comes from. And then our programs income, so that hundred and thirty dollars, a hundred and thirty thousand, it's coming in, it's going back out to the producers. That is program income that then goes right back out. And the market produces about another twenty thousand on top of that that goes to supporting the staff in that program.
And I have a question. Where do you see most of the people coming from in the four hundred blocks with such free food? Where are you seeing that spread?
Well, up until Monday, I would have said all over the county. However, our transit system just went away.
Yeah.
So that is one of the things that we're trying to problem solve at this point, is how we can actually increase. We've been planning on restarting our delivery program, and we think we're going to have to actually do that in a much more robust way than we've been expecting, because we think we're going to need to bring food to people instead of people being able to come to us. So at the moment, I am not entirely sure, but it's probably going to be, you know, at drop-off sites in some of the cities in both directions. We're probably going to have at least one drop-off site heading up toward Klatskaya and probably to Outmost direction. So, but I don't know, had a better answer for transit system included.
I have good news for you. They, they have a little bit of a Band-Aid that they.
Do they?
Carry them through. So they're going to reserve services. They're not going to be the, the level of service that we had before. But I heard that from Susan Weber's chief of staff today.
That is really good news. I will pass it on to my staff, because we had a big conversation about this on the day. So what are we going to do now? And that's great news, actually. I was, my car was shut. I live in Warren, and so I took the bus to work for two weeks. And suddenly, we've been bad if it hadn't been this year. It wouldn't have been good for anybody.
Or it's been a two-year-old.
People that need to get to dog and appointments, it was go boil. Yeah, for sure. Thank you for that information. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Graham.
All right, thanks.
Appreciate it. You have something else?
I'm last.
All right.
Hi. It's good to be here. It's actually a duty pool to hear all of your presentations. I have experience with each of your organizations, and they're all so good. So this is maybe a really fun, a little challenging project to have to determine where the money goes. I'm here with the North Coast Land Conservancy. And what, what they do, should I go on to that?
Briefly.
Briefly, okay. We are an accredited nonprofit land trust, which basically means we conserve important habitats on the coast. We help forests become old growth forests. We help restore wetlands. I'm here today to talk about prairies and butterflies, to help people plant and wildlife. Um, to help people plant some wildlife there. That is our vision. And our service area is the, basically from the coast range into the ocean, from Astoria down to Laken City. Our office is based in Seaside. Um, I've been there fifteen months. I am their Development Director, which means I connect people and organizations to projects that are meaningful to them uh in the work we do. Questions on that, or? Okay. Um, so I am here to request um assistance funding of project to bring Oregon Silver Spot Butterfly back to Clatsup County. Um, this is a butterfly that used to thrive in the Clatsup plains. Uh, as of the eighties, it became, uh, it was, it was classified as a federally threatened species. And it has not been seen in Clatsup County since the nineties. It's like a pretty medium-sized butterfly. So you may have seen them at the Oregon Zoo. They have a pollinator program and this is one of two species that um they are trying to reorganize, basically. Um, so they take I learned actually a lot about this program, so I have some notes here. Um, they take the eggs um, and they have this entire system and they basically raise them until they are butterflies and they release about two thousand a year into native habitats. Well, we don't have any here. Uh, they are released at a couple places in Saddle Mountain. And there was one other, oh, in the Stuckinout, what, National Wildlife Refuge. Uh, so none of here. So these silver spot butterflies, um, they rely on the early blue violet, which is one of like seven native wildflowers um that NCLC would like to um plant in the Clatsup plains. Um, this one though is the only one that the butterfly can complete its life cycle on. It's the only thing the caterpillar will eat. So if there's none of these, then they just, they won't make it. Um, so that, I mean, that, that's our project. We want to reintroduce this butterfly by planting native wildflowers. And the entire project will probably be eight to ten thousand dollars, uh, because we have a very robust volunteer program and a lot of that gets done, gets donated. Questions? Do you leave anything out?
Yes. Do you plan to do this mostly on land that you currently own? Or do you plan to do it in association with other groups and other banking?
Currently, it is only planned on land that we own. Why? Do you have ideas?
Do you know some books?
Yeah.
Maybe we can, wildflower, yeah, like let's not do ones, let's do wildflower, then those.
No, we, uh, we have an area you need to talk about, talk about.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, totally. Give us a problem to take it from. Yeah.
Good question.
Yes.
So we planted some of those many years ago on Reed's Ranch.
Yeah.
I just wanted to plant.
I saw you, the pictures kind of looking at the details. Yeah.
So how's that gone and are the violets still there or?
Some of them are still there. Um, many of them are not, and this is a pollinator issue. We just don't have pollinator. So it's ranked a little bit chicaney. Need the plants to do the pollinator, need the pollinators for the plants. Uh, so we're trying to break that cycle again. We thought the butterfly would have been reintroduced about twenty seventeen. But the habitat is not in the condition that they can be yet. So this would be one of the missing links. Yes.
So if we're talking about the re-ranch, not to, not to dish on my buddy Billy, but um, as long as you run sheep on, on the property, the violet will last.
Right, right.
And it used to be, you know, when my mom was alive, they you know, there, they, they were plenty of silver spot butterflies all the way down through the islands, you know, and all the way basically to the Gearheart Golf Course. Out of Randy Kur's house there, you guys have all that land that Billy isn't, had done, that's often Randy's cattle and sheep farm, correct?
Yeah.
To the west.
Yeah.
Are you going to introduce the violet back to that?
Yeah, the, um, we are going to put it wherever there is not grazing. Is it, like, if it is prairie land and we own it, we will want to plant um the, the violets as well as the other wildflowers, so the mature butterflies. But yeah, that is, that is one of the, the things that we couldn't do is, is like, we wouldn't plant them where there is grazing.
And how does, and how does the elk population get along with these?
Oh, they affect it, for sure. Yeah, yeah.
So basically, you're, we're kind of up against a rock and hard spot.
It's hard, yeah.
Because there's lots and lots of elk.
There are lots and lots of elk, yeah.
Do you have a timeline for this project?
Our, uh, our stewardship director is talking about it this year. If it doesn't happen in this calendar year, it would be completed before spring next, next year. Okay, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Somebody else? We might have somebody on Zoom.
Yeah. Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, great. Um, I'm Kitty Pano and I'm representing Trails and Art Association. And we've been in Gearheart for seventy-three years as a nonprofit with um our, our focus is to education and fostering creative art and enhancing the enjoyment art in the community if we can uh do that. And we offer a lot of low-cost and free, free workshops and quite a bit of other things. We've been very lucky to have the help from Gearheart in the past to help renovate our, our building. It's a hundred and twenty years old. And it, it was moved from downtown. It's, it's has a, she's seen a lot of Gearheart history, really. We love our building and everything that goes on. We have about seventy-five members right now. But we're open to uh, all our workshops and everything are open to the whole community. So as you know, you've given us a lot of help with our building, but she is a hundred and twenty years old. Volunteers have taken care of the innards and we, we do have some, found some rot after we had some leakage. Uh, now we all, we have new hot water heaters and we have everything fixed that we were able to do, but we do um need to replace some rotten portions um uh flooring and repatching the walls. Uh, we have uh people in wheelchairs now coming because we have uh just uh tables that are, we can use for disabilities. And so we've attracted more people that are older, that have to stand or that kind of thing. So of course, they need to use the restroom. We'd like to do it and try to maintain our historical renovation. Uh, right now, we're washing our hands and when it was, um, you know, part of the Gearheart School, annexed to the old Gearheart School, we're still using the the, the grade schoolers the sink, water and same sink, same cabinet, everything. We'd like to kind of keep those if we can though. And so we might need to re-glaze them or to refinish. A lot of stuff we can do on our own, but we also know that we, we have to have commercial contractors when we do that. But we went through and we, we talked about three contractors and we haven't selected one. We're doing it if we can. And if we can't get a grant, then we're gonna, we'll, we'll repatch our wall and then you know, wait for the future when we have a little more money. Um, are there any questions?
I don't think we have any questions, Kitty.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, about any other takers for?
I'm sure they're analyzing.
Alrighty. Uh, in that case, we're gonna close the public hearing of the state revenue share presentation. And thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Very, need to clarify, when you were talking about here, old, wobbly, preferably, squibbly, squibbly blocks are here.
Yeah.
Oh.
Really? A cap, it's all of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that someone in the room's jacket?
It's mine.
Okay.
Uh, we're now gonna open a public comment period on proposed budget programs and services in regard to the budget proposal that was made available to the public on or around, I would say, Tuesday, April eighteenth. Have any members of the public that would like to make comment?
Any public online? I do have Charles Iverson online, who was a part of this as well. So he is monitoring, I believe, and so he can get to any of the work.
Charles is a budget committee member. Right, okay. All right, well, hearing none, we will close the public comment period. We now have to open or
Don't have to open.
Don't have to do anything. Do I turn this part over to you, Justin?
Please.
For the budget committee discussion on proposed programs and services.
Yes.
May I ask clarification?
Yes.
Programs and services. Um, the programs that, uh, does this thing include the, the projects that we discussed three weeks ago?
Yeah.
As well as the revenue share.
Right. So you need to decide as a budget committee what the best um form of organizational strategy is to talk about just general questions about the budget or go page by page and talk about things in the budget or uh go straight to the state revenue share and talk about that and how you want to allocate those funds. So you can
That's up to us, too.
That's up to you of the best style. A lot of times it's better to give the state revenue share over only because you just kind of heard what they had to say and it might be fresh in your mind. Um, that budget, you know, they have there was sixty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars proposed or requested. And we, we can spend all of it that's in the budget or we can uh go off of my recommendation of what to go and allocate. And if that's the case, um, you know, twenty-two thousand dollars over of what they passed. So not everybody would get the amount that they have.
Justin, can you, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know if this is somewhere in all this. What's the total state revenue monies that we have to give out?
So it's in the budget. If you go to page, if you go to Plan Forty-Five, which is page twenty-four. And then on page twenty-five, it's the breakdown. I, the budget officer recommended forty thousand dollars for you to allocate out. But actually, it's forty-two thousand because you can do this any way you want. Uh, those three, the five hundred and the fifteen hundred are ones we've had in the past. Uh, but they can be changed, like maybe celebrations and materials and services can be increased and they, to support the street dance, because they're requesting a thousand this year. So maybe that thousand. So you have to take forty-two thousand, but you could take a maximum of forty-nine thousand because the whole budget is forty-nine and spend the appropriated fee fund balance. But you can spend it all and allocate it all. What I would caution that is for any reason revenues don't meet, we still might need to reduce some of those grants if you allocate all forty-nine thousand.
So you're recommending we cut about twenty thousand?
Twenty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-three. Sharon, it happens every year, if that makes you feel better. There's usually somebody who always wants or requests ten thousand dollars. So it, it's not uncommon to have to make decisions on how to make sure that you're meeting the needs.
But while we have, that's something we only can allocate maximum forty-nine.
Correct, yes. And, and just because they've asked for an amount doesn't mean we have, we can still prove it, but for a lesser amount, absolutely, yes.
Which is what we've done.
Yes, every year.
So I've got a question. I mean, going through, going through all these requests and everything like that, there seems to be a fair amount of redundancy. I mean, how many food banks serve how many people? You know, I mean, some people are, you know, passing out hygiene stuff and everything like that. And other people are passing out, you know, food baskets and other people, you know, you just it just seems to me like, you know, I'm, I'm a great one for getting rid of redundancy. You know, whether it be dispatch centers or, or, you know, it seemed to me that in this county, which is that large, you could have one entity that passed out food deals with satellite stations. And I mean, you know, like this guy that that had ninety percent of, of her budget is in, you know, goes to, goes to the staff. So that means that ten percent is only getting out to the people that they're serving. I see, I mean, that seems to me like it's backwards. So, I mean, I don't know how the rest of you guys feel about this, but, you know, I mean.
Oh, I, I guess it would depend on the service that they're providing. Some of these, um, some of these, a lot of these services that came to us today, particularly like um the food, um, the food banks. They're, the, the folks that they're servicing may not be, may not either be aware of other food bank banks or may not be able to get to the other food banks. There might be limitations why the they're required to have the, the redundancy. So I, I, I understand it would be a better system if if it were all under one umbrella and then you only had to pay for one set of staff and it would probably be far more efficient. But I mean, that there is some value to also having it because, for example, um, you have Saint Vincent's and um, there's another church up here north um Gearheart that I go to that also has a food bank, but they're religious food bank banks and some people may have reasons why they don't want to go to that particular location. So, um, and if you're, if you don't have a car and you don't have a house, it might not be convenient for you to go someplace on the north end when you so on the south end. So, um, I, I can see why, why some of them do this the way that they're doing it.
I mean, I don't wanna be, I, I don't wanna sound like a Scrooge or anything like that, but, you know, it seemed to me that, you know, I mean,
Yeah.
if they're, if they're in need of, if they're in need of food or need of service or something like that, and you've got somebody, somebody that's willing to, to supply that, and you don't like that particular organization. You know, and you, you don't choose to go in and use that organization, well, then that's on you.
Right.
You know, and for us, and, and to come and ask us is because, you know, we're a fairly well-to-do community. And we can ask for, you know, for funds from the, from the government. I don't think it's, I don't think it behooves us just to give the money out unless these people, you know, want to start tightening their budgets. And consolidate.
This has been a question that's come up quite a few times.
I'm sure.
Over the years, and it's been hard to explain from their standpoint anyway. It's been hard for them to explain to us, but I know the um From their standpoint, anyway, it's been hard for them to explain to us, but I know the, the regional food bank. Does bring in a lot of food, and then they actually sell a lot of their food at a very reduced rate to these individual food banks. Some of the money is for, is, is kind of what you're talking about, they are sharing that in the satellites, I'm sure exactly how it works though. That's all I got, really, I mean, I, I don't know too much else.
Maybe we're reducing.
Well, our food bank is only open two days a week, Thursdays and Tuesdays, and are only open for about three hours. And there, so if someone come, and we serve the South County. So if somebody comes down from Warrington, we're not able to serve them, so we have food banks north of us that can serve them. So that's why we have multiple food banks. Now, in Cannon Beach, we serve Cannon Beach, they have a food bank as well. So some, those people can actually get food from us and from Cannon Beach, but they're only open one day a week. And I think the one that, the other one that's applied in here, in Gearheart, is only open one day a week, I don't know if that's correct or not. But for those folks who work and don't get off till five, that, we can't help them, we're closed, so then they might have to go to a different food bank. So we only have one paid employee, and that's how we work.
Martin, naturally, she's all more paid employees.
We do, she's awesome.
But I mean, you know, I mean, you're somebody that's spending ninety percent of.
Yeah.
Of their budget and everything, I have six employees.
Yes.
Can you, can you tell me on this question, how you, where you see that they're spending ninety percent of their budget?
She said she's just.
That's exactly what she said.
Ninety percent?
That's what she said.
Yeah.
She said a hundred and thirty thousand dollars goes out to the community, and the rest, which is about ninety percent of their budget, goes to.
There's one thing about that, they're a different model, they're not a food, necessarily, absolutely a food distributor. They're an incubator. They, they have ideas that they're trying to bring to the community and thoughts and support to help people grow food all across the community.
You're talking about the web?
Yeah.
Right, yeah, they support the, the farmers.
Yeah.
And so their outreach is different than a food bank.
Yeah, so they, yeah.
And they do.
Their operation work too. Yeah, they're up sharing education and variety of other things like that, so you've got high on number of employees, but no necessarily get a lot of funds to do.
Yeah, I was surprised by that. I, when I was looking at her, at her budget, it was kind of wacky. So that's why I asked the question, I did, because I didn't quite understand it at first.
What do you feel strongly about one of the organizations?
So my question is, what's the, what's the most organized way to do this? In my mind, I'm thinking we can go through every entity and say, just go around and say how much we wanna give them and see what the consensus is. I mean, I don't know, unless you have a better idea, I don't know how to do this.
No.
And then just go down the line and say what everybody feels we should give them and see where that gets us by just cutting down the costs.
Right. I think that's appropriate.
I can keep running total with Justin's help, unless you know where you're at.
Well, I could make it a little faster if we all look at. Page twenty-five in the budget, you've got what was done, adopted in the budget this year. And that works out to be forty thousand three hundred dollars, and depending on where your final position is. Of course, you gotta have Trails End in there, which would make it up to forty-four thousand, forty-five thousand dollars. And you just give them what they, what they got last year, and you're done. That's just a suggestion, you know, if you go to your budget on page twenty-five, you can just go, well, there's forty thousand dollars and the Trails End is asking for forty-eight hundred dollars. So I already know we're at forty, forty-five.
Well, we've got, the Harvard didn't get anything last year, I think they didn't get it in on time, so we need to consider that, so it's a pretty important organization.
Right, no, I, I agree, I'm just getting a shortcut to going through it line by line and talking, you know, roundtable.
But to add, to Sharon's point, you, you've got the number up to forty-five thousand by adding the Trails End in there, but then you gotta add another five, that the Harvard's asking for that.
Right.
So that gets you up to fifty.
Right, so you've cut something in half.
Right.
Right.
And it, you know, that's. This is just a process of, they're asking for as much as they can, and they're not gonna get what they, you know, they asked for because it's never happened, and.
Well, the regional food bank last year got thirty-eight hundred bucks.
Right.
And they're asking for ten grand this year.
Yeah, well, they're gonna get thirty-eight hundred dollars according to what I just said, if we go by this other list.
And Helping Hands got five thousand last year, so, you know, they're asking for twice that.
Right, but they're not gonna get that, we're just gonna give them what they got last year or this year. Is, it's just a suggestion to speed the process. So we can go to the budget document also.
Right.
But, you know, it's whatever you guys wanna do, I'm just throwing out an idea.
Okay.
Justin, I'd like to ask about our, our, our unappropriated funding fund balance. The need to carry money over each year.
The need, one of the strategies for doing that is, is that you don't always know what your revenue, revenue stream is going to be, right? A budget.
But, but in this case, we do, we know we're getting forty, we're getting from the state.
Well, you don't know that.
Oh, no, we do.
It's just an estimate.
Oh, okay.
No, a budget document is just an estimate of what we think we're going to receive.
Getting from the state.
Yes, if any number of things could impact that number.
Okay, okay.
You know, so something being happened.
Yeah, I understand.
And it could go up into the census, that would be something, I was kind of like, oh, that's gonna happen, so.
It could go up, and then maybe Portland gets another three hundred thousand people, and they end up taking more of the preparation, you know. Another area throws more than our area, so then they would get more money than we would, they recalculated it.
Sure, I thought we had a fixed number.
No, it's just the best guess.
Do we have any, uh, historical information as to what we thought we were gonna get from the state?
So you can look at the actual data back.
Yeah.
Um.
On page twenty-four.
Correct.
Okay.
And so those are actual figures that we received in the state.
So we don't know what they proposed, we don't know what are proposed.
They, they don't propose like an actual dollar amount, they give you a handout of projections of what they think overall you may get.
And that's where the forty-two comes from.
Correct.
So when we got that, it's your. Uh, thirty-two fifty?
But, so in twenty twenty-one, we got the twenty-four, and then in twenty-one, twenty-two, we got thirty-three, and then I'm estimating thirty-five.
Oh, there it comes.
Yeah. This year, I think we may get a little bit more than that, we still have one more payment in May, and of the. As Chad said, our appropriations due to population increase, and we, those were in effect this year. So we'll maybe see an increase, other than just the standard inflationary increase of everything going up. But I don't know, I, I can't estimate how much exactly that will be yet. Because we haven't really used the new census numbers. So if you. I feel like I've been conservative, so I feel like that amount we will bring in. So you can spend forty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty, but what I will say is if the revenue doesn't come in for some reason. Then the grants don't go out.
Okay. So you can choose which grants go out or none of the grants go out?
I think that we, we would probably have to talk as a council, or a council would have to, or maybe just pick. Like, say, ten percent across the board, everybody gets less, or whatever percentage to make up the difference, everyone gets that less. The problem with that, and that's why I left the end of appropriated funding balance, because. That way, you're kind of insured that there's not only gonna be money that carries forward, but that if there is a deflux, that you have enough to cover it, you have to. Lay all your assets on that.
Well, let's start asking ourselves as a group, should we at least abide by maintain, by sticking with Justin's recommendation? That we maintain an unappropriated fund balance of seventy-five. Work from forty-two, or we want to dig into that unappropriated fund in that way, and how much should we spend? How we start, try to deal with, starting with that question?
Um, I, I favor a more conservative approach myself.
Me too. Too?
Um, yeah.
Anybody else?
I, I agree with the conservative approach, and the other, and the other thing is, Justin, I mean, if we, if we come up with an amount that we're. We're comfortable with as far as donations and that, and our revenue sharing comes in at a higher, at a higher amount. We carry that over and put it in a reserve fund?
Yeah, it rolls over, and so next year, if we would have that money, we would be in the same discussion.
Because I went through the seventies and the, in the mid-eighties, when the economy tanked and things were really tight, and food costs today are just outrageous. They can talk about, all they want to, about trying to curb inflation enough that, you know, next year, it could be worse. I mean, you know, these people could really be in dire straits, and there'd be, could be a lot more people on the street that are asking for services and provisions. That was one of my reasons for saying, I think that, you know, I mean, the hope these people all get together in one room. And, and work out, you know, some sort of, okay, here's, here's the top of the pyramid, and, and, you know, we're gonna. Divide everything up and open down the list. Get rid of, you know, the redundancy. Why do we have seven food districts in this county?
So if we put everything in, like Carrie said, if I take everything that was awarded last year and move it over, that total is fifty thousand one hundred and seventy-three.
But you're missing.
But you're missing the harbor.
No, we haven't, I put the harbor in there and I put four thousand eight hundred seventy-three.
I mean, based on their requests.
Yeah.
So you added their request to what we spent last year.
So what about your idea? What if we just said we're gonna cut ten percent from everybody's ask?
I'd like to cut more from some.
Well, yeah.
It would be fifty-eight thousand dollars, though.
Like Helping Hands is ten thousand, ten percent.
Right, fifteen percent, or whatever brings us down to what we need.
And we would need to cut eight thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars if we awarded what we awarded last year, plus those two additions. I, I personally would like us to see to take an, an approach that this is, this is Gearheart's money, and so we, I think. It's, it's in the best interest of Gearheart if we concentrate on things that. Will benefit Gearheart the best, or the most, and start with the organization, like obviously Trails End, we, you know, that's a Gearheart thing that we, I feel. That's, we have to support, you have things like the Seaside Hall where nobody else is servicing Gearheart with that particular service, the, the meeting hall, and the, the. That kind of stuff, Helping Hands has been a great partner with us so far, and we're expecting even more partnerships as, as we continue to be impacted by the things that we're being impacted now with the homeless. And then, then I would agree somewhat on the, on the food. You know, countries down below is that we, you know, we pick maybe the ones that we think are gonna be most servicing us and helping us, that's, that's my personal approach. But I'm, I'm willing to listen.
I, I think, well, last year, I know we gave Helping Hands five thousand, and they were not present. And they weren't present tonight, and that was, kind of makes me go, hmm, because if you're gonna ask for ten thousand dollars from the city of Gearheart, it would be nice to show up.
Yeah, but Ellen's really shown up on this homeless thing.
That is true, and I used to be on the board of Helping Hands, so I'm not against her.
The other side of that is that maybe they don't have the staff to have somebody show up here, which is kind of good in a way, as opposed to ninety percent of your budget going. You know what I'm saying, there's two ways to kind of look at it.
That is true.
Well, I can remember reading in the pamphlet that Helping Hands' budget in Plazza is fifty-six thousand dollars. But they've got six other or five other stations in other counties where there's been over a million dollars in some of these places. So as far as, they're a good organization, they're helping in Plazza, but. Ten thousand dollars is not a give that I would give on my watch. I wouldn't give them five thousand like we did last year, because I believe tightening the belt. Is what we got, we got to, what we have to do. But talking like a conservative worker.
Did you go to see that?
I didn't go to.
I mean, I mean, here's, listen, Alan's, Alan's budget, you know, George Snisser is giving millions to him, okay? He's not only, Alan's not only asking Gearheart for ten thousand dollars, he's asking Warrington, which he's putting in a facility up there. He's asking Astoria, okay, he's over there asking Seaside to pay for that remodel that he's got there, you know, for the two buildings. I mean, he's, you know.
Right, but I mean, if.
He's asking for this amount here and expecting something that.
And the need was there, I mean.
Well, that's true, the need is there, but the need is also there for, you know, for the little yellow house.
Yes.
I mean, I've been there, that place is absolutely packed, with, you know, with recovery out of all that.
I won't get an argument from me, one of the things I'll say in, in support of Helping Hands is that it's one of the few that we have on here, if not the only one that we have on here, that is, gives us a housing option. And, and I know our law enforcement have reached out to them, and when we've reached out to them, they've responded and helping find solutions to folks that are on the street that don't wanna be on the street. Not everybody who's on the street, you know, they, they're not always able to be employed, they, they have been in the past. And I'm not saying that we give them the whole ten thousand dollars, I, I agree with you, there's somebody's gonna have to, to, we're gonna have to reduce money. But again, that goes back to my, my conversation of let's look at the ones that are giving us services that nobody else is providing, and if we're going to reduce amounts, let's do it in the redundancy. Let's determine which, you know, which of the food banks are serving us the best and, and running the business the best.
So do you have some information on Helping Hands, I talked to Alan Iverson a couple of times, now he's mentioned, I think both those times, that Plazza County does have a very small budget. That's because that is what he receives from Plazza County, and that the majority of his budget for his operations is actually coming from other communities to support ours.
And he's in partnership with Iron Tribe also, which is in our city, correct, Justin?
Yes.
I think that's what I said.
On Oster.
I'm not sure, but.
Yeah, they, they.
I thought I did.
They're, they're. I believe that, well, that's, I, I, that's what he told me, I think we, we had a meeting where nobody else was present, and he, he told me that. Iron Tribe is, has, does have a house, they got.
On Oster.
Hold our house, yes. No, but what I'm saying is, I think he's, it's, there's some kind of a connection there.
It probably is, because both of them are also trying to get these people back into being employed.
Right.
They're both doing that.
Um, and the, and the thing is, when you're talking about the unhoused, it's. That is something where you do need separate organizations, the different organizations, and you need to support it, because you'll have folks that have, for whatever reason, they have a bias or prejudice against that particular organization, but they'll accept help from that organization. So you need a lot of different options and order, a lot of different tools and people to call, because, you know, perhaps Helping Hands won't have a, a house that is fit, that then you have community action that might. Or in the, in the last case, that we, we had to actually reach out to the Red Cross to get some help. So I, I, I'm just gonna throw that out there, I, I would. I would be comfortable with giving Helping Hands five thousand, again, I would be comfortable with reducing what we're giving to Seaside Park and Crack, because as much as I support what they're doing, I think that housing people is a little bit more important to Gearheart right now, at this moment.
Um, along that lines, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Chad, do we have any numbers about how many people go through the Trails End Art Center? Do they keep numbers of, because I never see, hardly ever see people over there.
Yeah.
That's my experience.
Over the years, they've struggled with numbers, they're trying to get people and new artists in there, access has been a little difficult for them to kind of work on, trying to make art a part of the Trails and Art Center, bringing that in. I know that the playground has actually brought some more people into their organization, so not very many. So not very many, but at times they do some children's things, they do a lot of support for senior arts and stuff like that as well. And they're just kind of.
Yeah, I just I just feel like I'd love to see those numbers and know exactly what's going on over there before I gave them forty eight some odd hundred dollars. That's just my feeling, only because every time I walk by there, there's hardly, there's either no cars there, there's one car there, or maybe I'm there at the wrong times. I don't I don't know, but that's been my experience. So I would really like to see what's going on over there before I allocate, you know, a substantial amount of money to them, and I'm not trying to be mean or anything.
No, I get, I get.
But, um.
Well, and I also, when I read the proposal, I wondered if that might be something where we could do a a community fundraising type event to to meet their need. Because I they they are loved, whether they are, you know, whether people actually go in there or not, that, you know, that have Gearheart has an emotional attachment to that building. And you, we might be able to get people to privately donate if we were to to share their need and and help them advertise their need.
You know, it would be fun would be like an art in the park kind of a thing and invite the whole community and have some artists doing stuff there.
I think they, I think, I mean, they've got it, I mean, you know, they've got Seaside Art Walk, we've got Gearheart Art Walk.
Right, but how many really, I would, I want to know how many people really attend that. I've done the Art Walk twice in Gearheart, not recently, but there were, I didn't see that many people, quite honestly. And if anybody has a more recent experience about that, I'd love to hear, because I don't really know.
I guess before the pandemic, within they used to, you know, maybe they used to have the our wine and art walk. You know, that's a lot of people.
To help this along, you think maybe, like, we talked about a thing that we're dealing with, you know, housing, we're dealing with homelessness, we're dealing with food. Do you want to maybe start with those folks, take a look at those grants, and we can see what we have left over and start placing them? So it is.
I'd like to suggest a different process if I can. The the column adopted budget this year, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, where we spent forty thousand three hundred. We have three thousand dollars that we have in that column from last year. Line fourteen for the mayor's emergency grant. That's three thousand dollars that kind of goes back into kitty for this for these new proposals. Those granting asked for that, yeah. Right? So that's three thousand dollars that can be allocated, say, to the Harbor or say to Trails End.
It is figured in the, if you looked back at page twenty, it's actually line fourteen. It's the twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty.
Oh, that's, you know.
Oh, the beginning of that.
Uh, I wondered about those twelve dollars.
That's three thousand for that. If we haven't sent all of the
Okay. All right, so that three thousand goes back in. Yeah, but if, but it's also part of the forty, in terms of if we're going to match, try to match everybody from last year and then find some more money for Harbor and for Trails End, the only two agencies that we didn't fund last year. That three grand can go towards them, because really it brings that column down to thirty seven three, if you don't add in the mayor's grant.
Yeah, if you remove the mayor's discretionary grant.
Now that number's thirty seven three hundred.
You only need to come up with five thousand one hundred and seventy three to support.
Uh, four thousand, uh, uh.
The two new apps.
Four thousand seven hundred to get back up to forty two thousand.
So if we took what we awarded last year, which was forty thousand three hundred.
Right.
They, and we moved that over, we added the four thousand eight hundred seventy three and five thousand to the Harbor. We removed the three thousand, we still need to come up with five thousand one hundred and seventy three dollars.
Well, if they were going to fund those things at full.
Right.
Well, let's let's leave them out for the long, let's just leave them out for the long.
The two that we didn't.
Leave out the two new people, new, just leave them out.
That we didn't, okay, so then we, you're right, let's see, they'll take those two out. Then we are at four thousand seven hundred dollars that you could allocate.
Just for the long. For that, yes, yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So to get that, so if we look at the, what we did last year, and we spent forty thousand three hundred. But three thousand of it is back in our kitty, so to speak, from the mayor's grant. So really, we can just say we're trying to match thirty seven three hundred. Also, we, and this year we have forty two thousand to spend, so that means we can spend another forty seven hundred dollars. We have two people asking us for much more than that. At least some of it can go to that forty seven hundred. And if we take away a little bit from some of the other ones, we're going to get down to two thousand dollars. Right. Because we're not going to give, we have a ten thousand dollar ask from Helping Hands, and we're all saying we're not going to give them ten thousand. So we're going to give them some amount. So between, we have forty seven hundred dollars to come to fund over and above what we funded last year. Is everybody with me on this?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. I do, I would suggest, I don't think we're just going to split that forty seven hundred between Helping Hands and the Trails End. I think we want to adjust some other ones a little bit. And give some amount to Helping Hands and Trails End and make some adjustments to some of the other ones. Are we in agreement on that?
Yeah, as long as you're talking about the Harbor and not Helping Hands. I think that's what you meant to say.
Well, yes, yeah, yeah, the Helping Hands, we're going to reduce some, right. Adding in, but actually, yeah, you're right, we just gave Helping Hands the five grand. We just have the Harbers asking for five.
Right.
Yeah, so we're being asked for basically ten thousand dollars, of which we only have forty seven hundred to fund.
Right, so I would, I would agree if we were to reduce the amount to the Seaside Park and Rec Foundation. We still give them something, but we reduce it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then I think you proposed reducing the to the the Trails End.
Let me ask this question, is there any fund, is there any agency here that people have any reasons to think we shouldn't be funding them at all? I don't, but I'm just wondering if anybody thinks there's any agency that we shouldn't be funding.
Totally, you're talking.
Yeah, like take all their money. And I'm not, and I'm not in favor of that, but I just want to make sure we're all in agreement that all of these agencies should be getting something.
Yeah, I'm in agree with, I'm in agreement with that, all of, you know, the two outlets for me are the Seaside Park and Rec and possibly the Airport Committee, but they're asking for so little, it's it's not okay with it.
Right.
How about, how about if we cut Seaside Park and Rec half and give us an extra fifteen hundred bucks?
I would cut out two thousand.
I'm not, uh, they made an impassioned plea and they showed up. And they serve people in Gearheart. And they have a capital fund and they're getting money from a lot of other people, but we have consistently, but we, well, we gave them five hundred, five hundred, and then last year we bumped that up to three thousand dollars. They asked for three. I just feel a little bad cutting them off.
Oh, I, yeah, I wouldn't want to cut them off, but I feel.
No, I mean, I mean, cutting them back.
Well, I I I'm okay with cutting them back.
Okay.
It just, and and not, and because this isn't a popularity contest, this is a what do we eat?
Right.
And and what we need right now, the trend in in our county and certainly in Gearheart is that we need housing, we need food, we've got people that are in need of those things.
Right.
And so as much as I support this and allowing our kids to get scholarships, you know, because they're they're able to compete better. I they're asking other cities for the funds and and again, I think that they could make that up.
Right, so 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 Seaside Park and Rec is one that might get a little less than their three, than their three thousand dollar ask.
Also, and I hate to throw a wrench in all this, I'd love to see Seaside Hall get a little bit more than the past.
Oh.
They know.
Well, again, they they are.
Well, they're asking for two.
They're asking for two.
And we've given them one, one point five. Yeah, I see your points. I mean, I'm not.
You're providing a really important service.
Yeah, I agree. Well, then let's look, all right, so that's on the table, that there's an agency we'd like to give more to that became last year. Who, who you, who else do people feel like should get a little bit less?
Well, if you, if you reduce Park and Rec by a thousand dollars, you could afford to give the Yellow House another five hundred dollars.
Well, not quite, we still have to fund the Harbor and Trails End.
Did you already cut back the Clatsop Community Action?
I didn't do anything to them.
No, you only two you've talked about was, well, Sunset Park and Rec reducing them by half, maybe to fifteen hundred.
Right, well, actually, I did infer that we were going to cut back the CCA, which we got, because they're asking for ten. We gave them thirty eight hundred last year, and now we're thinking about just trying to match last year on that.
Okay, so you are advocating.
A reduction from their request of ten.
Yeah, because the two ten thousand asks are probably.
Side of our bounds.
They both need to be cut back.
I didn't, I asked, I actually went over this one today with my cohorts. And they said that they were going to they were going to help Gearheart by buying hygiene products for Gearheart residents in need via the Personal Care Pantry, and I said, what's the Personal Care Pantry?
At St. Vincent.
I know, I had to look it up, but they're located in the Providence Hospital at a desk. So I don't know. I don't know, I just.
St. Vincent.
St. Vincent is the personal care.
Yeah. But there's a desk in Providence when you walk in that she's there and she can help people. But I I don't see that as an outreach to Gearheart. It might be, but I'm just saying, I was confused.
So are you saying, take, uh, St. Vincent, or you were talking about the?
I'm talking about classic community action.
Okay.
Fine, fine, well.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Well, uh.
This is like in a lounge.
Yeah, yeah. So I I would be okay with reducing them down to three, so we've just made.
Reducing to this year.
CCA, reducing them down to three, what we've given them prior to last year. So that we can take that eight hundred and slide it over to something else. But I have a question. The Mechanicum Watershed Council and the North Coast Land Conservancy, why can't they combine their resources and the, and the, I mean, they're both proposing that we plant native plants?
Yeah, they're different. So it's a different thing. I mean, I I could see cutting the Mechanicum Watershed back a thousand for sure. And if you guys want to cut NCLC back by, you know, five hundred or a thousand, I guess I can see that. I I mean, I'm a little prejudiced about NCLC.
Okay, so.
Which way?
I, I would, I'm agreeing to cutting back Mechanicum by a thousand. Um, and that the all these, all these letters were, are lost.
The North Coast Land Conservancy.
Yeah, there it is. Okay, so you're talking two thousand.
To fifteen hundred.
To fifteen hundred.
And then we cut back, let me just be clear, cut to act the Sunset Park and Rec by a thousand, is that right?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
So.
There we are.
So not funding, at this point, we've made no decisions about the Trail End or how much to give the Harbor. At this point, we're at thirty four thousand. So we have eight thousand that can be allocated back up into the.
Okay, okay. Oh, great, so then we're we're starting.
Well, we're doing good. So why can't we give Trails End two thousand and Harbor five thousand? Because Harbor was really important and they didn't get any from us last year.
They didn't?
They didn't show up.
That's not, then we get the application.
And and Harbor is important also to to our goals as far as keeping people from ending up on the street and minimal safe places to go. They asked for five thousand. Can I see five thousand and you, great, shoot four?
There's still a thousand left.
Right, so they still have a thousand extra.
So you're going to give more to the Yellow House?
What's the Yellow House we got?
How about we give the Harbor four?
Yeah, I'm going to increase the Yellow House to two thousand.
Is that what it's called?
The only Yellow House is the Charles Wiltshire Program.
Okay.
Oh, that's the Seaside Hall.
How about we give the Harbor four thousand? I mean, they're asking for five, we're reducing everybody, so how about giving them four thousand?
That.
And then that gives us an extra grand to put.
Two thousand, an extra two thousand.
Okay.
Can we give that to Seaside Hall?
Is that where you're going? Well, so, but what, what she's saying is that we don't really need to reduce Harbor by that much, because we've already made up some, we're, we're now talking about inserting money back into our equation.
We've got that straight now.
Yeah, a thousand dollars.
Well, what do we, what, what do we decide on for Trails End Art Center?
Let's, let's go down the list so that everybody's on the same page. Mechanicum, what do you show?
Mechanicum Watershed, fifteen hundred.
Okay, North Coast, North Coast.
Food Web.
Food Web, the the Food Web, uh, three thousand. That would reduce the, that that's, okay, so let's start that, because if we're going to reduce, they, I think we rolled an agreement.
Let's get the whole updated list.
Okay, and then South County?
The South County Food Bank, five thousand.
And then St. Vincent?
St. Vincent's three thousand.
Casa.
Three thousand. Seaside Hall? Two thousand.
Helping Hands?
Five thousand.
Harbor?
Five thousand.
Five, you have five in it?
I have five in it.
Start that one.
Cedar? Cedar, three thousand.
That's Yelsey.
Fifteen hundred. Fifteen hundred.
Trails End? CCA?
Our two thousand.
Three thousand. And where's that total?
That total's forty one.
Oh, and then the Airport, five hundred.
Oh, yeah.
No, Dana House is here, didn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, they have that five hundred. Or a shed or something.
Yeah, not for the landlord.
Okay. What's that give you?
Forty one thousand.
Forty one, okay. All right, so we're narrowing, we're zeroing it out. Okay. Now, let's just take notes here. We, we reduced Mechanicum was given twenty five last year, they asked for five, and now we've reduced seven thousand. Uh, the Food Web, they asked, they gave them three, they asked for five. Uh, we're allowing them three same last year. South County, they, last year they got five, this year they asked for five, and we'll keep them there. Food Bank. Uh, same for St. Vincent, well, we got three thousand last year, they asked for three, we have a lot of threes. Casa, Casa, yes, uh, same thing. Actually, they asked for four this year. Uh, we gave them three last year, we're allowing three currently. Seaside Hall, they asked for two, we've given them fifteen hundred. Yeah, sorry, they asked for two this year.
Yeah, and I showed that we were giving them.
And we were allowing them two.
Okay.
Helping Hands, uh, they, you know, they asked, I even made a note of what people asked for last year. They asked us here for ten thousand, and we gave them five. And this year they asked for ten again, and we're currently allowing five. The Harbor, uh, we're allowing, they asked for five, we're allowing them five. Cedar, they asked for three, we're allowing them three, that was true last year. Uh, NCLC, they asked for two, we allowed them two. We currently have them at fifteen hundred. Seaside Park and Rec, they asked for three, last year we gave them three, currently we have fifteen hundred. Trails End, asking for forty eight, we're allowing two thousand. And then the Food Bank, they asked for ten, last year they asked for five, last year we gave thirty eight hundred, now we're reducing them back to three thousand. That goes a little bit against the idea of helping people with food issues and hygiene issues, so reducing that category.
Yeah.
And Airport, five hundred, so we're down to forty one thousand of forty two to get the position to allow. So how do people feel about our choices?
Well, I.
Well, I, I, I could be sold on this if, if I hadn't, if it was a perfect world and only I got to choose.
And that, and that will be half.
Only in my own town, so, I just, my husband's dismay.
Yeah, that wasn't this year.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, well, do you want to?
Um, I, I agree with it, now that everybody's pointed it out, the, the North Coast Food Web, um, that.
There's.
I mean, we haven't reduced any, but anything from them, and I think that the money could be better spent if we reduced a little bit. Uh, I mean, of all of them, for them to get everything that they've asked for, I'm not sure that.
No, they're asking, they're giving less.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, my bad, my bad, okay. Are they deserving of four? Over some of the others?
Does anybody really, you know, so I've gotta just admit, I don't know much about the certification, I don't really know how. You know, what their programs are, what they really do other than what's written here. Maybe a very important service, I mean, it's not just helping people get, it's also helping the people who produce.
Solving, solving problems.
And we have a lot of, we have a lot of, you know, uh, people trying to provide, you know. Services to people, and that's what they're trying to create an act for. It's not quite the same as being a food bank for somebody who walks in, you can have them a loaf of bread. But I think it's still probably important, we'll, uh, uh, getting producers functional. And getting their products to people at, at, at reduced costs. Because, you know, to their market, those people who are low income, getting, um. Getting a SNAP and some assistance or getting money at these, at discounts. So I'd like to think they're doing a good service to helping some people, they're helping. So, I don't think just because they're not handing people a loaf of bread from a bank doesn't mean that. Piece of the food supply puzzle.
Yeah, but I view them, I view them as a middleman. You know, I mean, if they were giving the farmers part of their, you know, part of their. Five hundred and sixty six thousand dollar budget.
Well, they're getting the farmers connected to the recipients, the farmer can't do that, they don't need that. You don't just have, you just don't have producers and buyers to be people to, to move the process along. And to help them.
And, and they're also trainers. So, think of that as a community college for growers.
Yeah, except I go to the Astoria Sunny Market, you know. And there's all kinds of, I mean, there's all kinds of farmers out there that are selling the product.
Yeah. That's, that's.
So.
And then the question would be, are they getting any kind of services or advice or training to be even at that event? Would they even be there without someone like this organization help? I think that's a question to ask.
Well, I, I think that those people that, that have the, you know, the produce booths and, and the, uh. And the booths up there at Astoria Sunny Market, they do, they do very, very well. I mean, they, they come all the way up from Hillsborough or, you know, as far out as Gresham. You know, to come down here and flood their stuff. So.
And, and are they, did they get to that point because of someone helping them get? Is what I'm trying to point out.
Which is not possible. So she, the seaside, the seaside. Deal they set up there to great school partner, or the.
Farmers Market.
Farmers Market, yeah, okay, I mean, where all those guys come from, Brownsby. You know, St. Helens.
But they're not necessarily giving food to low income people.
No, that's, that's true.
Justin wants the total right now.
So you're at forty one thousand.
Twenty one thousand extra.
So you have a thousand that you could redistribute or, or just have it roll over or put back in the mayor's discretionary grant that you give away?
But I'm comfortable with.
Give it to the mayor.
That's what I'm comfortable with. I'm, I'm.
It's a discretionary grant, so yes, I do want the thousand.
I'm comfortable with, with the numbers that we have and, and, um, give them.
Yeah.
Give the thousand back into the mayor's emergency grant, and then. That's, that's what I feel comfortable with.
Has anybody opposed to putting a thousand dollars in celebration of materials and reducing materials to supply a thousand?
Yeah, no, I think we need to give that too. So move, uh, so it's just moving the funds, but yeah, we have had that request for the street, they want a thousand dollars. So I would like at least a thousand dollars in the celebration of materials line.
You want that to go from the mayor's?
No, I just want to switch the two that are already there, they're already established.
Oh, make, uh, make line, uh.
Yeah.
In seven.
Or fifteen hundred dollars.
I want to make line four, yes.
Fifteen hundred.
Uh-huh, and then reduce.
And make line five, five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's, uh, just a switch there.
Yeah.
Okay.
But otherwise, we would be done with state running this year.
Uh, I would like to see us get up to the forty two thousand, I'd like to disperse another thousand dollars to these agencies rather than stay in the mayor's.
Okay.
Well.
Well, well, that's, you may be running the show.
That's just my, then, well, let me ask, what is, or is this the mayor's emergency grant, are we putting, is, is that the?
It's a discretionary.
Is that, is that line fourteen, is that what you're talking about?
And it's fairly new.
Yeah, but they didn't come and present, they didn't give us a pro.
I did present. Here it is.
So we're thinking of putting a thousand dollars back on to line fourteen.
Yeah.
And some of the history behind that particular fund, cuz it's relatively new, was is that sometimes there are organizations that may be new to the community or new to the area. Or maybe just were not aware of our process, and so it gave the ability, we could have a particular organization not submit things and they. You know, denied, and then the budget's done, so then they don't have an opportunity. I think that the purpose was is they gave an opportunity for the, the mayor to, to be able without having to do anything other than to, to just grant that fund.
Has it been granted?
Or enough?
Oh, twenty dollars at a time, if that's what it was.
Has it been granted in the past?
Not that I know of.
So this year is the new?
It was last year and this year.
For the last year.
But, I mean, it hasn't been granted this year.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So we're talking about a thousand dollars, still more. What about if we give five hundred to the mayor? And we gave five hundred back to the, uh, CCA regional food, food banks, and not cutting off eight hundred dollars, we're just producing like three hundred this year.
Do we still have enough money for the street and has?
Yeah, yeah.
Or, uh, that's just a suggestion, uh.
Oh, I'm sure.
I, I could do that, yeah.
This is something you guys gotta work out on.
You're, you're staying.
You have a conflict.
What about the rest?
Sure, I'm fine.
Alright, so we're gonna put five hundred dollars on line fourteen. And we're going to add five hundred more back on line twenty one and bring them up to thirty five hundred. And then that equals forty two thousand.
Correct.
And we have to check our math there, did we get it right?
It looks right, and it's spreadsheet.
Is everybody, is everybody in agreement, tell me? Preston?
Yeah.
You good with that?
Do we need to do a motion and, or invoke to, for recognition or?
No, we will do it if, if we approve the budget.
Okay, everybody, it's, we're all understood, we're all on the same page, and that's all good, right?
Let's move on to fighting, if that's something else.
Sorry, one, one quick question on, on the mayor's fund, and those, those are funds only to distribute to nonprofit organizations.
Correct, absolutely, yes, same criteria or what?
Yeah, ours carries private fund.
If you have nonprofits.
Alright, so that, I'll mention on top of the state revenue share.
Okay.
For rent, and now we go on to the budget of the other proposed, uh, budget. Alright, so we all got that on April eighteenth, and we've all studied it carefully for the last two weeks. Now, we can take out our list of questions and comments. Where's to start?
Uh, I have a, I have a couple of questions on the revisions. I guess the yellow highlighter should have highlighted the forty nine point five percent rate increase on the water. Really was, I. Imagine they were gonna come back and say something different, and then we're, no understanding, but my goodness.
Okay, but what page are you on, wondering?
So I, so I, um, have, I, I, in, since the time we met to now, we've had two major, um, events happen. That I felt like needed, um, to be adjusted in the budget, so I am making a recommendation that those two be adjusted. For Chad, doesn't count out.
I'm sorry, as I moved back.
No, 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 that's fine.
Okay.
So, um, it's, I put it on your thing, and I also posted it online, so people can get it out there. I am making a recommendation with the general fund, the police department, ten, twelve, pages six and seven. So on May first, I received an email from the Department of Public Safety Standards and Training. And they clarified that the city of Gearheart wouldn't have no cost for new officers to attend the training academy. And so that left some, uh, additional funds in there, but this would only, we would still need to pay the officer's salary, which we had already had in the budget. Counselor Budget Committee member Gould had talked to me just about, um. Thinking about this training period, thinking about new staff coming on, and there was nothing in the budget for having. The Cl辛 County Sheriff's or maybe other, some other, you know, po- police officer force. Unable to help us support during this time of training, whether we actually get somebody on or not to backfill our position.
Right, and they're in training, so we still have coverage in the city.
Yes.
Um, I, I think that we were very optimistic in, in our numbers initially, and, and. You, we don't know what could happen, I mean, we could send somebody to the training academy and they could not pass, that's, that's a fairly common thing. Um, they can need to go through the academy a couple of times and or, I mean, they could get injured, there's all kinds of thing. I just think that we needed to, to pad that a little bit and make sure that we had some money to, because I'm conservative. Basically conservative, I wanted to make sure that we were covered, and she pointed out that that money was, she had set it aside, that she didn't need it really because she didn't really care for that training. So she's recommending that she move it down to, um, the purchase services so that we have it in case we need to pay for the sheriff's contract.
Correct, and that's no impact on that budget, it's all in the same category, but it does allow that opportunity, um. For some support, and right now, we're paying twelve thousand dollars a month, but. Counselor Gould and I had talked about that, you know, may, maybe that doesn't look like twelve, twelve thousand dollars a month. If we have three officers that can't, and one of them can, like our police chief can actually be out there faster. Um, you know, they may want the opportunity to have overtime. Uh, we might not have to pay the twelve thousand, but at, at least it gives us a start where we don't have to worry about it for, you know, a couple of months at least.
My concern is, is having the flexibility to prepare for overnight coverage because the issues that we have been facing recently, look at the report. And we received last night, the number of disturbances that we, you know, that have occurred in the city, and I think a lot of them are occurring overnight, a lot of clients, a lot of things that, that we need to be. The changes that we're seeing in, in where police are responding to a lot of it's happening in the overnight hours, and that's kind of a concern, I, I wanted to have some flexibility to. To the budget to, if we need it, we can, we can purchase.
Correct.
So I think that, that's a, a nice way to reinvest back in.
Along those lines, do we have extra coverage over the Fourth of July, do we pay for extra police coverage?
We never had in the past.
Yes, usually, in the past, we've had one officer on. Ian's first Fourth of July was by himself. That was chat training. Um, but we use with certs and our officers, this year with, um, Cl辛 County Sheriff's Department assisting as well, we should be better covered, yeah. It's very soft.
Right, but I'm just wondering if we are need, gonna need monies for that extra coverage, that's why I'm asking.
And that could be part of this purchase service.
Right, that's why, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, 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 I think this is for that also.
And then what Kurt Penroy was referring to is the next one. So, uh, the Water Operating Fund and the Water Reserve Fund, we purchase our water from the city of Warrington. During certain periods of time, due are, due to our water production obstructions. Uh, it just recently, uh, Chad had received an email from the city manager in Warrington, just starting to talk about, you know. The MOU's coming due, just starting to get out there and talk about what's coming up. And she, um, had indicated that it, it looks like it's going to be about a forty nine point five percent rate increase. Um, and so there's no way that this budget can support that type of an increase. And so the only real solution we have right now, because we have to plan, where it doesn't matter whether if we look at rate increases or whatever else, we have to make it balanced now. Um, I am recommending that we just transfer more money from the water reserve over to compensate for that additional increase. Um, I looked really closely at what we're paying this year, I subtracted out, we do pay seaside just a little bit, or some meters that we have over on the south end of Gearheart. Um, so I subtracted those out and came up with a number that is in the expenditure line on page twenty one. So the new amount for water purchase is four hundred and sixty five thousand. So we increased that pretty substantially, and then in the water reserve, we just moved the transfer.
Do we get more in that water from Warrington in the summer as opposed to the winter?
Yeah.
And how, I mean, is the Gulf Coast a large part of that water purchase?
No, they have their own wells.
Okay.
I mean, other than their hotels. And, and that, I think, of course, it's helped run by wells, and this is worst case scenario, there's some negotiations to, yet to be had. I think that they were a little short sighted, but they were actually getting city Gearheart, so we're working on that, and, and that's just new, and. So we'll, we'll continue that, but I think that Justin's taking a good approach with worst case.
Because we don't have to make the transfer, we don't need the money, right? Something else happens, that money can stay in the reserve fund, we don't have to transfer it, but at this point, we have no other revenue source in that operating fund. And, and Warrington really, um. Has the ability to, to charge rates, I mean, we need our water, yeah, yeah.
So. So did we take some, some money out of, out of the building fund for the water department and transferred into the reserve fund? At the last year, what was that? We had, we found that we just got. Yeah.
The water construction fund?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was like worth a thousand dollars.
Okay, so that one is a reserve fund.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so we have a tap for reserve fund.
Not yet, next year would be our first year, we do, correct.
So we're gonna have to adjust our councilor goals.
And there, and there was a, and there was a thing in our, from the water deal about. The monitoring and everything like that, and how, how much we can take out. At between, you know, two hundred period and two hundred period, two hundred period, all the way into.
Mayor Smith has taken a fond self to try for water rights. Right, to increase the amount of water that we would take it in.
It is a good deal.
He's trying, I mean, to, to allow Gearheart to be able to produce more and not rely on Warrington.
Cause you remember, all words in the West were found over water.
Yep.
Well, you saw what happened to us because of Warrington. We couldn't produce all the water that we were told we could, and we had to do a study for ten, twelve years. Because Warrington said, we're gonna lose all that money, we want them to pay us. And we paid them over three million dollars so far, they should have negotiated a little bit better.
We are thankful that they are helping us.
Because they couldn't say, take a walk. Well, I, 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 this isn't a question, we have to do it, so.
Anyway.
And then other questions you guys may have had? Yes.
No, I, I thought we were going right to that, so.
Oh, um, well. Answered one of my questions. I had on page six, line twenty three, the professional development. So that now just happens to come up, that you don't need to spend that, so you're transferring that to purchase services so for future, to its enterprise. Okay.
Correct.
We'll slide thirty one, community care services.
So community care services was a new line that we had added last year's budgeting cycle. And it was to allow our officers, since they're the, mostly the first responders to incidences, to be able to have a line item. It, it was in the state revenue share, but we were too afraid that it, it, it was so important that we just decided to fund it. So that if they needed, uh, somebody needed food or needed a taxi or needed a hotel room, that they have the ability just right there to be able to have a small amount of funds to be able to do that.
Gotcha.
This year, we have increased that because we've had additional needs. So we've had towing for fire vehicles. And so we've had some other things that we have fallen. Hopefully, we, we won't continue to necessarily need those, but we do wanna keep some money in there so that they are allowed, just kind of that spontaneous, like, I wanna, I need to make sure that you wear the holiday gear tonight. And they do that, not regularly, but.
But they need a, they need a, a function to.
Correct. And can I interject real quick, since we're on that page and point out a conversation that we also had today about the line number twenty nine, the purchase services? And that, that refers to Lexington. And there's possibility, there's, there's two things that could happen there. Number one is that there's a possibility we get that reduced through association. Be so, Officer Brown, or I'm sorry, Sergeant Brown is looking into that. Also, if we needed to, we could pay that in two-year increment. It split it in half and pay seven, five hundred, seventy five hundred if we get into a pickle. As it's gonna be an ongoing thing, there will be ongoing costs. We just don't, he doesn't know what those are yet, but he's, I requested that he look into that. And he is looking into that for us.
Cause they have, the police department has a specific procedural manual that it covers all things for liability and for procedural, all that safety. And you can, we have one, but it's, it's very old and outdated, so. The process was when the new police chief come in, that we kind of update and, and refresh and get kind of caught back up to current safety standards. So that was why we put that line item in there.
Twenty first century.
Yeah, and it, it's expensive, but not having it would be far, could be far more expensive for us. This is, this is something I can't stress enough how important it is, so.
Well, I mean, we're starting with a whole new regime as soon as we got our police chief. You know, I mean, whatever, whatever was asked is gonna be asked.
I had another question just in, on, uh, on page three, on ten ten. For industrial, on line of twenty seven. Purchase services for forty, post forty thousand dollars. So let's see if that can increase over previous years.
Yeah.
On line twenty seven.
I'm sorry. This is combined with professional services and has been renamed previously City Hall contracted labor. So it had a different name before.
You get a subscription coming out.
Yeah, so it's a combination and it, there are things here at city halls that we have that are not payable. So we have janitorial services that come in and they clean for us. We have window washers that come and, and not very often. I don't want to make it sound like the, the very first year. We have yard maintenance, so they do some basic yard maintenance for things that are, I mean, we know, but they do things like pruning and trimming and flower maintenance. And we also put money in there. New, we need to do a salary schedule analysis. And we need to do a job description and we need to be able to have the resources to do that, so that was that.
So, and you have, I see now as, you guys, that was the budget.
Yeah, but.
To describe all that.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. That's a lot of information.
Okay, got it. That's pretty much all I have to come up with, Dana.
No, my concerns about the, the extra costs of the bathroom cleaning were addressed. The extra garbage, we might, cost, we might, we adjust that, so I'm comfortable with that. Fire department OT, I did have a question about that because we've already exceeded the amount that we've allocated for next year, this year. But it sounds like perhaps they're making the operational changes that they need to make. So they, are, are we confident that they're gonna be able to stick to the twenty five thousand? Or should that be increased? Because this year, the, with our current budget as of just a couple of days, it'll be in the thirties. And I know that there were, there were some issues about that. That's gonna concern mine for a while. And they addressed it in the city council meeting a couple back, but they've had some unexpected things happening.
If all things happen similar to the way that it's this year, we should be able to keep it in line. It's going to adjustments that we've made to this loss and who's on and when and some weekend coverage and things like that. So if things become, say, similar this year, we should be able to keep it in line this year. If things get to be much busier, and we see a large increase again this year, then it's gonna be a challenge. We may have to move some money further and adhere to accomplish that, and that's the way I'd rather handle that at the moment.
They may be able to, I mean, I can't speak for them, but I always try in my mind, think of ways that we could supplement if we needed to. And they do on line thirty nine, they haven't spent their equipment fund, all of it for the last few years. So that might be somewhere that we can do a budget resolution if they do overspend. So that would give them an opportunity to maybe just keep that in the back of their mind. That they might wanna leave some funds there and maybe not buy equipment till towards the end of the fiscal year and see how their overtime budget, it's an option, not tell them that they have to do that, but that is a line that they could think about.
Uh, hey, maybe this is a dumb question. I don't know.
No dumb questions.
The restroom cleaning, I saw it under parks and water building maintenance.
So Dana, did Dana kind of, she had talked to me about it too. And so she had mentioned it because she wanted to make sure that we had enough funds in there. So I, we have a water treatment plant. The water treatment plant has restrooms.
Right.
And so, but we have a contracted service that is there to do restrooms and, and clean restaurants. So we would try charging it to the water department. In, when I was putting the budget together, we also have parks restroom. And so I felt like in a way, that is not a water operating expense. That it is more of a parks, because people who are using that are, are using the, the tenders, the pickleball parks, recreation, not part of the water operating system. It happens to be there, but not one reason why. Right, so I had put, increased the parks budget to cover that. And so slightly reduced it in, but needed the funds elsewhere. But we have been charging things there now, so I didn't wanna not say we haven't been charging things there because we have been charging restrooms there. But I kind of put it not fully into places, but I'm afraid of how much it might cost if we have to do enforced safety, yeah.
Yeah, enhanced cleanings and, and I don't anticipate that that's gonna be forever. I think that we'll probably be able to bring that down. And then the other thing, we're gonna be able to use this for us during some, especially that's for the labor support office. So that's another place we're gonna work.
That was come out of parks?
Parks. So out of that fifteen thousand, I might increase the rate substantially.
Now, I was just curious. I figured you were done, probably something like that. I didn't really understand. And then my other question is, that I really don't understand is the American Rescue Plan projects. There's a line twelve on page ten.
Yeah, there's three spots.
There's three spots.
Yep.
It's twenty one and page twenty eight and that is the.
So yeah, the COVID relief funds were released. And part of the COVID relief money, they allocated to the American Rescue Plan in which they took, gave to the state of Oregon, to the state of Oregon without really a strenuous grant application, just confirmation that we are interested. Send money to us over a two-year period, so we have received all of that money. And you have very specific projects that it can be spent on. I mean, they are very specific. And we haven't committed to any projects, but it had been divided out in three different areas where we thought that those funds could most likely be used.
Can you just give me two examples of what the specific things there are?
Water infrastructure and broadband. I know those are two. The largest section is, is if you can prove as a city that your revenue was impacted. So if you can document very clearly, which we cannot, that your revenue stream decreased during COVID, then you can use those funds to supplement back into your budget. And there was, there's four things in that broad.
Did we actually have that money?
Yes.
Just have, okay.
Yes, we actually have no, to spend it is what you're saying, maybe not the project. We need to spend it by December of twenty twenty four.
Or we have to give it back.
Or we have to give it back.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll figure it out.
Councillor Golds?
They went away and they came back, just like that.
And if they, if we didn't distribute it correctly, we can always, we would need to do a supplemental budget probably to move those large sums around. It's like almost three hundred thousand.
Can you show that there was additional expenses for the water treatment facility or?
Infrastructure.
No, that's what I mean, water. Reduced, uh, increased expenses versus.
Okay.
I was trying to use that, yeah.
Yeah, increased bathroom expenses.
But that's, so the park, so basically the restrooms that the pickleball people used every night, I saw it under parks deal. That could turn into a asthma situation really easily.
Because of the.
No, no, because of, because of the needles and everything else.
Yeah, and so that's what we're monitoring. This seems to be so far.
But those increased expenditures, I, I mean, a little facetious, but.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to.
They're not related to COVID though.
What is related to COVID is the population increase that we have, which is more wear and tear on our systems.
Systems.
Causing more repairs.
Yeah, so infrastructure projects, maybe looking at something to, I think it's not a lot of money, so you can't buy the water tanks, but.
Today, that's the councillor goal to be, so we can move on with this one today.
Yes, we do have that money. It's our money to do anything. We've allocated a certain way, but at this point, we haven't spent anything. So it is on the table to have discussions as long as it meets the criteria.
Thank you.
Yep.
Page thirty one hazardous mitigation. What are the materials and services at a hundred and two thousand and the fifty two thousand?
Those are, so when you do a budget, you have the revenue. If you don't appropriate, you can't spend it. And so we just appropriated so that if you needed to buy containers, you could go out and spend ten thousand dollars.
With. Councillor Gould.
Right, okay, so I understand then that this is just a, a holding tank for money.
It's just an appropriation if we need it. The ultimate goal was is we don't need it and it would just carry over to the next year. Be, begin the beginning and fund balance the next year.
Okay, up at line three where it says barrel purchase annual fee.
Uh huh, we have the cash program.
Right, but what is the annual fee?
Forty dollars if you have a cash. So each person who has a barrel has to pay forty dollars to have their barrels stored up at the.
Oh my god.
Secret location.
So, so you gotta pay for your barrel to be on top of the hill.
You're never gonna get to.
I, I know that. Not without a.
So you need to put whatever you want in there. And you don't have to, we have barrels for sale, but I think people have brought their own barrels. It's almost, they meet the criteria and, and they can fill them with whatever they want and then.
Uh, except for hazardous material.
Well, you can't put certain.
Guns.
That's what the mitigation is for.
I think the barrel program, you gotta keep it home and that way you can get in when the weight comes.
Good after order some bigger barrels.
So that's, that's why.
All right.
And the intent would not need to spend that, you know, revenue funds, those funds, they come to the council and ask to spend them. But at this point, that's no, you approve fuel tanks.
Right.
Out of there.
Okay, no, I.
Okay.
Just asking a question.
I have.
Total base.
Wow. Good master of money. Look at that.
So at this point, you have a couple of options. We can schedule a meeting, which we would just have to coordinate because we will have to do legal notice before that. We can approve as amended or, um, I guess those two options.
Another question on your draft, changes that you made to, that you gave us today. On the, on page one, on the approved draft total budget. The highlighted line, two up from the bottom. Leaving out, leaving out the road district fund. So city of Gerhardt budget, eight million, one hundred and eighty one thousand, four hundred and forty five dollars and fifty one cents. That number.
Yes.
And that's, that's what you are going to be asking us to propose a motion to accept.
So remember that the road district is a district separate, yeah, so there are.
But I have a different question.
Oh, okay, yes, accurate.
Okay, so that number, eight million, one eighty one. So this was a nice spreadsheet that you sent us after the last meeting.
Right.
Which did just this for us, keep the whole budget for the whole city just by department. So that number is the hundred and forty four thousand dollar difference because of the water thing.
Correct.
That number was eight million and thirty seven thousand dollars. Okay, so I understand the need for the hundred and forty four thousand. But it seems to me that was on, that hundred and forty four thousand dollars is a transfer from the reserve fund.
Right.
Why, and so if it's a transfer, why wasn't it already in the budget? Why does this go up by a hundred and forty four? It seems like you're taking it from one fund, the reserve fund, putting it as an expenditure.
You are, but you still have the expenditure transaction in the water fund. So you still have the transaction. The Water Reserve Fund doesn't change, but.
Well, the Water Reserve comes, comes down by a hundred and forty four and you just moved it into.
It, it, um.
That, that sounds blind. That's on, you've got.
The water resources is right up there and then it's taken out of revenue.
But you increase the expenditure line, you increase double expenditures because you have to increase expenditures in the water operating by a hundred and forty four, line thirty three. Water purchase, you increase the expenditure there and you increase the expenditure in the transfer.
Let's see what that is. So that's on page, some of the things you gave us on page. Let's see what that is, so that's, um, page, uh, some of the things you gave us on page twenty-eight. And it's line sixteen, improving the water system. It had been proposed to be seven ninety-nine. And then you took a hundred and forty-four out of that and it becomes six fifty-five.
But the total budget still stays one point three.
Yeah. Right, yeah, so why doesn't the total budget stay the same in, uh, as the eight million thirty-seven?
Because we increased the water operating budget, we increased it.
Which is wat- water operating fund.
Yes, so it was the one one five.
That, that was one one eight one. And now it's one three two five, it went up by a hundred and forty-four.
Right.
Okay, so the, the water reserve fund is no longer on this. Where you took the one forty-four from isn't on this.
Yeah.
This spreadsheet.
It's on.
Cause it would have come down by one forty-four.
It doesn't come down because we just took the money from capital outlay and moved it down, we just changed the numbers. We just changed the expenditures. I took it from line sixteen on, on page twenty-eight.
Yeah, I think it's from line sixteen.
I took, so see where the seven ninety-nine went to six fifty-five?
Yep.
But then I, it went from one ninety-seven to three forty-one, so I moved it from one to the other.
Right.
So the total of that fund didn't actually change?
Right. Yes. Yeah, so if the total of that fund didn't change, then why is this one after last meeting, a hundred and forty-four thousand less than now?
Because the water operating fund went up.
Okay. Right.
Cause we transferred, that whole fund went up by the hundred. Line thirty-three.
Fund stays one three oh five.
We didn't change the revenues here, we only moved these two around.
Gotta say, I'm still puzzled, I hate to be desperate.
So what you're saying is that your estimate of what we're gonna spend is higher now, that's why the budget is higher now?
I'm saying that the expenditures, we had to increase expenditures, but we still, we had expenditures, and we have to increase expenditures of another fund by transferring it?
Right, so here's the thing that really confused me, why does the water reserve fund stay at one three oh five?
Because we.
That should come down by a hundred and forty-four dollars.
No, and because we still have some money in there, re- remember in the large amount.
We took it from the wa- improving the water expenditures.
Line sixteen, right, and you put it into a, into the transfer.
So that transfer of three hundred and forty-one thousand seven hundred and five. Right? That moves into the water fund. So our revenues and our expenses match at one three oh five. We have one three oh five as far as revenue coming in. And then we have one three oh five as far as all the expenditures going out if we were to spend it all. And you waited, that was allocated out, it's two hundred thousand for materials and services, that'd be, that we don't need.
Right.
Six hundred and fifty-five, improving.
Right.
Grant side.
Right.
Capital outlay, then another expense is that transfer out, three hundred and forty-one thousand seven hundred and five. And then you'll see that transfer out go ahead and hit the, um, water fund itself, the reserve fund.
Right.
So this just, this just accounts for all of the moves, and if they weren't equal, we'd have a problem.
Right.
Cause we have more, we have a transaction, more transactions in the water operating fund.
Right. And so can you show the water operating fund?
Well, here's, here's this, what's the one ninety-seven?
Three forty-one.
And then materials and services. Those, um, three two hundred four sixty-five.
Yeah, makes sense.
This fund went from one one eight to one three two five.
So then we'll look at our resources fund, this is page nineteen. Line five.
Yeah.
That's where we receive that transfer, three hundred and forty-one for revenue.
Right.
And then we increased our materials and services expense. Our purchase expense. By part of that amount, and the rest of it went into operations.
So those one, these seven, what's the difference?
Right.
And the group. Yeah.
So if I have ten dollars in my savings account, I have ten dollars in my checking account, but then I get a bill for an additional five, five dollars. My budget is now gone up by five dollars, and even though I'm pulling it from my savings account, throwing it in my checking account to cover it, my, my budget is still going up by five dollars.
That's what you're asking, did, did the budget increase as opposed to just a transfer?
Right, right, so even though the monies are trans- the monies have moved from one account to another account, so that should be balanced, we're being charged more, so the, the budget is more, is that, am I explaining it correctly? The, so the budget has to account for the extra charge, and that is the amount that we, that we moved out of our reserve.
The money that we moved was already in the budget.
Right, but the amount that we're being charged on addition, the additional forty-nine point whatever percent was not in the budget, so that.
Expense.
Yes.
But it came out of our old savings account, and we moved it over to our checking account, so to speak, to carry your analogy out. Entire budget, so I, I really don't know if I'm wrong, and it's like.
I know what you're, I can't explain why.
It was eight million.
Right, no, I totally understand, yeah.
And we took money from one fund, you know, a reserve fund, and, and moved it over basically to an expenditure fund. But our total income didn't, didn't go up. We still have eight million three hundred, eight million three seventy to fill.
But our water reserve still has that transaction in it.
Yeah, but it's, but the water reserve fund went down from seven ninety-nine to six fifty-five.
But it went up in three forty-one, those two still have to add up to match the revenue.
Right, but it seems like we managed, like we have created an extra hundred and forty-four thousand dollars here.
Uh-huh.
It is, it is. So I, I really could be way wrong here, cause I don't understand accounting.
Cause these, these don't change.
No.
Right, I mean, we just changed the numbers, but it's still.
We have a hundred or one point three million dollars toward the water reserve.
Uh, what, what page, what line?
Twenty-eight.
Page twenty-eight.
Right.
That's what we have.
All right.
And then we have an expense from down below on the, on line twenty.
Off it.
Yeah.
For three hundred and forty-one thousand.
Right, and that, that's from line sixteen. We just line sixteen, right, one forty-four.
It didn't change the budget, we just moved expenditures around.
Yeah, so that equals.
But in the water reserve, we added this, so the water, well, yeah, we added this extra hundred and forty-four thousand.
The transfer.
Well, no, but we, to this line. So we increased this whole budget. Are you do, and then we increased the expenditure and to balance.
So basically, I mean, we're going total capital outlay was nine, nine oh seven, three eighty-two versus seven sixty-three, two ninety-four.
Correct.
And then you drop down to the next transfer, everything like that, you go from one ninety-seven, six seventeen, to three forty-one, seven oh five. And there's, I mean, you're, basically you're reducing one side and you're just adding the other side.
Yeah, I see, so, and so if line ninety-four is still equal, then why do, we don't have these line numbers, um, the.
Right.
You know, but if, if the one three oh five stays the same.
Because the water operating fund has.
Went up.
Has that additional hundred and forty-four transaction in it.
Just seems like we're counting it twice somehow.
Yeah, it does.
That's how, excuse me, now, I'm not an accountant, so I could well be not understanding this probably, but to my eye, it looks like we are counting that one forty-four twice somehow. Because all you've done is moved it from your reserve into your, and she, let's just not worry about that, it became a transfer. So you moved your reserve over to your water operating fund.
But each fund is separate, so, so the water operating fund is its own fund, and it has that revenues and expenditures.
Right.
So then when you have this other fund, you brought in revenue? I mean, I.
They didn't bring in revenue from it, you took it from your reserve.
Well, but they're not really se- they're not really connected.
Yeah, the water reserve fund, this entire fund, it doesn't play with.
Yeah, 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 I got that, yeah, I got, there are two separate lines right on this here.
So as a.
So this one had to balance.
Yeah, so we took on line twenty, transferred the water operating fund.
Page twenty.
So back on twenty, okay.
Three forty-one, seven oh five. Then.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go over to page nineteen, where that fund goes.
Okay.
Line five, leaves here, and went to line five, three forty-one, seven oh five.
Yeah.
Then expenses, we had that additional revenue, so now our expenses have to go up to match. And the expenses were put in water purchase and materials and services. You see both of those increases?
Uh, what line is water purchases?
Thirty-three on page twenty-one.
Oh.
I think that's your missing one.
Okay. So that went up.
Four sixty-five.
Right, so water purchases went up by a hundred and forty-four. And materials and services went up on line sixteen by a hundred and forty-four.
But that's just a roll-up, that's a summary page.
That's a summary page, okay, all right.
Yeah, so it's just a summary of each one of those that is rolled up to that page.
Okay.
Water purchase went up, so the.
Does your transfer there have to show a transfer in? It does?
It's on line five.
Oh, okay, oh, I see, all right, gotcha. Okay, and revenue, right.
Each fund just has to be balanced.
Okay, I'm gonna, I just have to, I just don't understand this well enough, and I'm not gonna, I don't wanna take up more time trying to argue the point in anyway, because I think it's just correct, I don't understand. Um, I'm so perplexed by it, but I'm going to, I'm just going to, you know, see to your, to. Does, do you know what you're doing, I just don't see how it, I'm not going to, to. And I appreciate everybody's patience.
No, not helping.
You gotta be comfortable with what you do.
Yeah. All right, that was long, and, uh, does anybody else have comments or uh, questions or discussion points?
So are we recommending the action on the proposed budget, go back to that? And send the city council for a scheduled meeting?
So, uh, would there be a motion to, somebody would like to offer to accept this amended budget? Which just seemed as nice to get out for somebody to come in.
I move, we accept the budget as amended. And send it on to the council.
Okay, does that need to be more specific? Okay, so on.
And I can read it if you.
Okay, sure.
So, um, a motion has been made at the Gearhart Budget Committee to approve the amended twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget in the amount of eight million one hundred eighty-one thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-one cents, which includes a permanent tax rate limit levy of a one dollar and zero zero five three per thousand of assessed value, general obligation debt service, as well as approval of the Gearhart Road District proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget in the amount of two hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and sixty dollars with a permanent tax rate limit levy of point oh six oh two per thousand of assessed value.
Thank you, I was going for the quick.
I liked it, I would have said all of that.
Is there a second?
I'll give you a second.
Is there any discussion? Right here, no discussion, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can you post? All right.
Eric, I'll work on a way, it, it's fund accounting, so wait, I'm just trying to think.
Right.
Figure out a way, each fund is separate and they have to balance, so.
Right, 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 I get, I get on.
It's, it's hard for me to articulate, so I, maybe I'll talk with our auditor too, maybe she can help me.
We'll, we'll try. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move, we adjourn.
One second.
I'll second.
Did you break that again?
I did.
I will take care of it again for you.
I did, thank you.
Oh, she wrote that, yeah.
Again. I saw that one, you talked to.
There was another, yeah, lots again.
And I'm closing it in three oh.
There was Dan, then there was.
I don't know where that I heard.
When?
Yeah.
I went to bed, I was wearing a bag, and I think, oh my God, I love that window.
Or whatever.
I went, oh my God.
They were trying to talk to.
And now it's over.
That's good for all of us.
Yeah.
Well, you know, you got someone to plug a side for it, yeah. I think that's what I have to do this once a year.
Yeah.
And I can check her on this.
Yeah, well, you know. So we two and a half hours, not opposed to a three and a half hour, like we did last year.
Yeah. Thank you, Justin. I, I, I totally get it, I struggle with it too.
I don't know if she had any, the way I read it was she had some
The, the water reserve fund, it's right Oh, yeah, down here. But the actual, this one point, because on the county, we have this revenue, and we have this expenditure, so that's another thing. We moved it around, so we moved it around in there.
I have any notes from last
Then when I can already Right.
But it's just, this, this thing's going around.
Yeah.
Because this, this revenue doesn't go down, because it's still getting on our revenue fund. So the revenues, pluses and the minuses have to eat.
Okay, if I pretend if you reduce, no, no, it reduces.
We didn't reduce our expenditures, we just
So interested in something.
Yeah.
We just shifted it from we just shifted from this one
Yeah, but I was just kinda curious.
We still have the same expenditures. We still have two hundred thousand, we still have seven hundred and sixty-three. And we still, we, this was at seven ninety-nine, and we had one ninety-seven, so.
Are you still recording?
We had all these things together.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.